You have a platform in this moment, you have to use it. You have to use your voice. And as a new council member at a local level, I think a lot about that and what who I want to be in this moment and who I don't want to be in this moment. And while it's while my at a face value not seem like a local issue. It seems like a national global issue. You have to be a geopolitical expert. It one hundred percent is a local issue. We had a Muslim man in our city. Just the other day get hit by a car because he's Muslim. Memorial Day weekend. I took some time to be outside. Lighten my schedule, but I've been doing a few constituent things here and there. I just came back from Sanford Middle School. They're having like a service day slash fun day. So it just went from classroom to classroom, but it kind of depends on the council member. A lot of people pack in a bunch of work in community. Some people would take it as some time off. I think I'm doing a little bit of both.
So you say you've been outside. Where have you been going?
Um, I went for a walk around Minnehaha Falls. I went to uh, Mariah State Park and went canoeing. Um, I tried to do pickleball outside, but it was raining. Um, it's my anniversary weekend with my partner. So we were just kind of spending time together outside.
Do you do pickleball a lot?
Not as often as I'd like to. I was a tennis player in high school.
Really?
So, mhm, not a very amazing tennis player. I would say pretty average, but grew up kind of playing tennis because we were close by a tennis court.
We are back on the Wedge Live podcast. I'm your host, John Edwards. I'm joined by Ward 12 Council Member Oreen Chowdhury. Minneapolis Council Member representing Ward 12. Thank you for being here during your work slash vacation week.
Happy to be here.
So let's start with the Star Tribune story was published yesterday about MPD is still using coaching. After having said for years, no, we don't do this. And for listeners, coaching is a way to critics will say it's a way to conceal discipline and misconduct from the public. Because it's technically classified as not discipline and so you don't hear about it. MPD has said for years that we're not doing this only for low level stuff. And it Star Tribune says, no, it's they're using it for things like uh use of force. Serious stuff is being uh wrapped into this coaching practice. Uh, so we're also four years past the murder of George Floyd. It's been two years since the murder of Amir Locke by MPD after the mayor had said, we don't do that anymore. So it's kind of a pattern of we don't do this thing anymore. Oops, actually we do. We're not surprised by this, but it's disappointing. What is your reaction?
My reaction is similar to a lot of community members that there's a lot of, a lot of disappointment and also a little bit of like, I'm not too surprised that this is the case, just based off of um history around police accountability in the city of Minneapolis. Coaching is something that I really think is a tool that we should take out of the toolbox in terms of discipline like the, the, one of the things that we have to get right through this consent decree, what's devolved upon us legally is transparency and accountability. And I think when we see this happen, it just erodes public trust in our ability to have oversight. And for me, I think it just says a lot when you have like the former chair of the PCOC quoted asking, um, is this used for exa- excessive force? And the answer is no, it's used for these low level things. And then we come back around and we have a new formation of uh PCOC um now. And the case is, yeah, it's been used for excessive force. It, it makes you wonder, it's like, what kind of recourse do we have as a community? It makes me wonder as a council member, what kind of recourse do I have legislatively? Or with oversight, how is this gonna play? In our police contract negotiations, is there even going to be a spot for us to do that? Um, so I'm hoping that coming into the next few weeks, me and council colleagues can have a really good discussion with each other in public and passing about how we, how we want to address this and ask the leadership that we have in our city. Our police chief, our mayor, city attorney, all, all these questions of, okay. This is, this is something that we said in the past, the city of Minneapolis, and now it's seen to be untrue. There's multiple council members who have rang the bell, both as council members and as citizens on coaching as a tool that gets us away from accountability, discipline, all the things that we are legally obligated to do. So.
Are we otherwise on the right track? Like, do you see bright spots as we move into the, this consent decree period? Like, should we feel good that MPD is on the right track? That's a weird question to follow up with, but like, are there, are there any reasons to feel good about the path that MPD is on?
I think the bright spots that I can point out is every um every few council cycles, we have our committee of the whole meeting and it goes into a subcommittee that's around the settlement agreement. And I think more people should pay attention to the work that happens there. Like we're building infrastructure and passing things forward. So there can be tools that support like data collection around accountability. Another thing that we know that's working well in, in our community is behavioral crisis response in terms of just like the whole public safety realm and net on accountability around that. Um, I think residents should continue to be concerned about the city's ability um to meet the standards of the consent decree. And I think council members like myself are rightfully concerned. I think it's great that we have an independent monitor um that we could all agree to and feel like they'll do um, they'll do a solid job. But every, every meeting, every council cycle meeting that we have around the settlement agreement, it just bits and pieces that are leading up to it. And we still have to wait for the DOJ consent decree to calm down. So I would honestly just say like, we're in a moment where like we can't keep we can't keep our eye, eye off of the prize and the prize being justice and accountability in this police department. Like, I don't think residents, council members, anyone should get comfortable with the fact that like we've done something to fundamentally change the issues that we've seen in our police department um predating the murder of George Floyd or following the murder of George Floyd. We got a lot of work to do and we gotta keep our leadership accountable to that. And that's looking at the council, the mayor, the police chief.
Are there things you're hoping to see in the police contract? It's come out, the mayor has announced that he's got an agreement with union leadership. Needs to be ratified by uh the rank and file of MPD and the city council. What are you hoping to see in that?
For me, it's been rather opaque um in terms of what we're going to see uh coming into this contract as a new council member. There's something in there within their listing reforms. I'm interested in seeing what those reforms are um. How that will show up. I'm hoping to see what's going to address like officers being in situations where they're going to make bad decisions, whether they're um overburdened with work, whether they're dealing with mental health issues, all that. But I'm really hoping that we can get into a public discussion about um the police contract. Uh, and I'm gonna hopefully push for that as much as I can on my end.
We're coming up on budget season. The mayor will be announcing his uh budget. Is that coming in August?
Yeah, he's supposed to give his um budget address August fifteenth, I believe.
There's a twenty one million dollar gap. Is this a year of austerity? Are you warning your constituents? I forget how the mayor has phrased it exactly, but he characterizing this year as a year of hard choices. No new programs. It's a year of hard choices. Is that uh how you see it as well?
No shiny new programs. Um, for me, what this means is really doubling down on what our priorities are as a city council. Um, what are the things that are must haves? What are the things that we need to keep on moving forward on? Where do our va- values line up in terms of connecting with the people that we serve? And I think that clarity needs to be found between me and my colleagues. I think we're all having those discussions right now. Um, we're having discussions with each other and also sharing priorities with the mayor. He set up meetings with each council member to share what their priorities are. Uh, I think people should know that. Um, what I'm really hoping happens is we get, we get some sort of understanding of like what programs are delivering and which programs aren't delivering and we can make choices based off of results. We have the Performance Management Innovation Department and that's a role that they're supposed to be playing. So I hope um that comes out and gives us some information to make decisions. The mayor has to propose a balanced budget um on August fifteenth. I, I also know that there's a tremendous need in our community um on things that we're still waiting to see be realized. I passed a budget amendment that was specifically um around transit safety coordinators. Because safety on transit or on corridors is multifaceted and requires connection by multiple jurisdictions. Um, and it is something that touches the city very often and that was through uh state aid that we got last legislative session and that hasn't come to fruition. And so it's like, we also need to be thinking about the programs that we have funded and we need and how to push that forward. Um, but I'm really interested in seeing what the mayor is gonna put forward in terms of balancing the twenty, twenty one million. I know that there was some talk about uh adding an additional council aide to each office. Um, that came as a surprise to me. Uh, and I don't, I, there was a pretty good, there was a small discussion um in our last budget meeting about that. Uh, I don't plan on supporting that. I don't know if there's necessarily consensus for that. That's also a miniscule, very minuscule part of our budget. So I just thought I'd throw that in there as a policy aide from the past.
So I had a conversation with Cam Gordon at a meeting, a war, a joint Ward 12, Ward 11 meeting about the new third precinct slash community safety center. And we were not talking about the subject at that meeting. We were talking about the staffing issue, like whether uh council offices should get that third staff member as was discussed there. And so he's concerned about the balance of power between the mayor and the council. It's recently shifted a great deal with the, the strong mayor amendment in the past in twenty one. And so he likes the idea of subject matter experts and this may be like someone assigned to specific committees, maybe the, I forget what Public Works is called now, but it's uh related to climate change. So you could have a climate expert or a public works expert or a public safety expert for the public safety committee. Uh, which I kind of like. I like that better than like a generic aide to each office. I think like uh, I like the idea of restoring some balance there so that the, you know, we've got staff too here on the council side to do stuff. What do you think about that idea?
Yeah, I don't think it's necessarily a bad idea. Um, I think I'm open to it. I do think we need to do some thinking on like how we would actually be able to facilitate that for each committee. Uh, we do have a policy and research team, oversight and evaluation team that's fairly new, that's been supporting um work for council members that is based on like subject matter that needs deeper research. We got a really great report back when it came to um doing analysis of the state's um TNC transit network companies study. Um, additionally, there's stuff I, I did a legislative directive specifically to this team on safe outdoor spaces to look at um municipalities that have done a version of safe outdoor space to do a landscape analysis to inform what we could do. And I think that's a tool that is very fairly new and we're kind of seeing how that all works. Um, and kind of just trying to get an understanding of like, for me as a council member, just like how is this legislative department like working together and making the job happen. Um, we're also getting additional aid. We passed additional aids for the president, vice president as a way of supporting the entire body. Um, we have, we have like some more constituent support. So I think we kind of have to observe and understand like, how are all these new tools that were given as a legislative body? New into government structure, uh, working together, especially as we're coming out of um, coming out of the pandemic. I still feel like we're partially within the shadow of the pandemic as a ci- as, as a local government, as a city, as a people. I'm interested in it, but I think we have to figure out like, how does it all fit together? We're also gonna get some communication support, which is sorely needed on the legislative side. And I agree with you um, on the fact that there's definitely a power imbalance on the tools that the legislative side of the city has versus the executive side.
You don't have to respond to this necessarily, but I just think it's interesting how the mayor took control of all the departments now. And also had to add additional layers of staff to manage all those departments that he taken control of. And also that leaves the city council with a gap to fill where they need more staff. It's like the city became incredibly less efficient by adopting this government structure change. Just seems like, I, I don't know. Does that ever occur to you?
I mean, my, my thoughts on it is like, we're in it now and we're going to, we're going, we're having some growing pains and there's not a single person in the city of Minneapolis, no matter what their position is, that's trying to figure it out and how it's gonna work. And I know that with government structure changes in other municipalities, it took them oh, well over a decade or are still making changes to make those adjustments.
I still hate it. Uh, so, so, okay. Through the three thousand Minnehaha Democracy Center at the former third precinct site. This is kind of budget related. It came up during the budget discussion recently. Because the idea from Mayor Fry's administration is we could stop paying rent on the existing election and voter services in Northeast. Move it into the former third precinct at thirty thousand Minnehaha and also have some community space there. Uh, there's some pushback on the council. I think President Elliot Payne said he doesn't necessarily think it's a bad idea or he didn't have an immediately negative reaction, but like there are people who for whom like going to vote in the former third precinct is not, not something they want to do. So I, I wonder if you have any thoughts about that idea or not?
My contention from the beginning has been, what is the community input on this? And I think the pushback that I get is we've talked everything to death. Um, there's been too much community engagement and I wholly disagree with that. Um, this is a a site that will always be a part of our history of the city of Minneapolis that holds an intense amount of trauma and gravity and trauma and healing are not just buzzwords. That's things that people in our community are actively doing. And I felt that um on May twenty fifth, on the anniversary of the murder of George Floyd. And it's just, if we're gonna have a democracy center, if that's what we're calling it, there needs to be a democratic process for the people in the neighborhood, on the corridor, the voters that are not turning out in high numbers that we're trying to support that get to weigh in um and have a conversation. And in committee, I shared over and over again that I was told that there was gonna be community engagement before this council was asked to take action. Asked to do an endorsement. And that was flipped, flipped on us, flipped on me. And I just felt like that wasn't right. Because the, that corridor, that neighborhood, the people over there, they're working on a vision for the area. Uh, we're seeing that with the Coliseum building opening up again here in just a bit. Uh, that deserve to, deserve to ask questions, deserve to know at a baseline what's happening with this site. Um, from the city of Minneapolis and also deserve to have the opportunity to give feedback and negotiate what it could be. And if people want an election voter services center there, they should be able to say that too and have an opportunity to give that input. But to say that there is full consensus as this, as the use is not, is not something that is true. I think there is definitely a debate that's happening and the debate is primarily held by um, communities of color, indigenous people, the black community in South Minneapolis that are kind of scratching their heads and saying, um, I'm not necessarily sure like if a democracy center is the thing that we want to be here, or maybe it could be, but what else does it mean? And I think that has been missing out of the narrative um about this site. And that's why I could not support it. Um, as an endo- as, as a city council member endorsing, because we just haven't, the administration hasn't done the work of gauging feedback and input from community members. And we should.
Uber and Lyft, uh, I, I bring, I'm laughing because I'm thinking of your terrible joke at the recent council meeting.
It was an excellently terrible joke.
I don't have the clip prepared, but I will put it in this episode. So uh, people can hear you making the joke. And then it sounds like at the end you start crying about how terrible your joke was. You made a weird sound. It's almost a laugh, but it also sounds like you're crying about how bad your joke is.
It was a Uber Lyft to get this done, to add some levity. So I'll, for the record, I thought my joke was amazing. It was very dad. I think, I think I was more lamenting about the fact that like my fellow council members needed to take a breath and needed to breathe. Cause it's getting pretty tense up there. It's like.
Tell me about the process. Tell me about the, tell me about the process for developing that joke. Uh, did someone write it for you or did you come up with that all on your own?
Me. It was honestly, I, I've said that joke before. I think I debuted it um, in one of the meetings with uh, um, some of our state leaders and legislators walked into the room. And I was just like, this is an Uber Lyft to get done. And everyone cracked up because who doesn't, everyone hates a dad joke, but everyone loves a dad joke.
Yeah. So critics here, let's get to what the critics are saying. The council could have just accepted the mayor's deal. It was close enough. Why, why would that have been a bad deal to say in March? Okay, mayor, we'll take those rates. Close enough. Let's end this.
Which deal was that?
I, I think he gave, what was it like one seventeen and thirty five cents? Was that the deal? It was something.
I think the, the formal deal that he gave was one seventeen and thirty four cents. That was given in writing um, to the authors. And that just, just, I think there was um some coverage that did a matrix of how much drivers would get. That would have been a much lower amount of take home dollars for drivers um, compared to what we got at the state. Um, and then I think the other number that exists out there that's closer to what the state landed on was never an official proposal given to the city council. So the, the rate that he formally gave was too low, in my view, and I think we're proven in that because as a city council, our whole goal was to push for the rate that we found um through, through two years, eighteen months of staff work. And then considering the state study moved down to one twenty seven. And when when we were in conversation with state leaders, me particularly as intergovernmental relations chair, one thing that felt clear the entire time just talking to the governor's office, talking to legislators was there was no pathway that could be offered to the city of Minneapolis where preemption wasn't on the table. And that, that became um towards the end when the bill was being finalized as council members, how do we push for the highest rate possible in this bill? How do we push for data transparency given to the city of Minneapolis? Like, that's one of the provisions that we want, is that the state will get data from Uber and Lyft and they will also give it to the city of Minneapolis. And since we pushed, since we were holding a high number, since we were collaborating with the state, since we extended the timeline, we were able to win this higher rate. And I, I genuinely believe if we accepted Mayor Fry's rate, we would have ended up with a much lower number in the state legislation in the negotiations that were continually happening with the rideshare companies, the governor's office, legislators and then us.
Do you think there would have been a state uh law passed if not for the Minneapolis proposal? Like, do you think that created the leverage to get uh the governor to agree not to veto or whatever, whatever the obstacle was at the state? Like, they were motivated to do this to avoid having Minneapolis numbers go into effect. Uh, do you think it happens without the city council acting?
I mean, if we go back in time to last legislative session, it was the city council members that authored it. Author the TNC legislation prior to it being authored at the state. Drivers, um, drivers came to city council members and shared their stories of how they were being underpaid, mistreated, were lacking safety and resources and said, could you help us? We have seen work that's been done in Seattle and New York and we need it here in Minneapolis. And since authors, Wonsley and Chavez took it on, that in frankly, that inspired work at the state and because we were continuing that work, absolutely. It was a part, this was a part of getting statewide legislation done.
And I think that what the, when the people say like, why didn't you take the mayor's deal? Well, now we have ra- these rates apply in St. Paul. These rates apply all across the state. There's a whole lot more drivers, like the increased pay doesn't end when you leave the borders of Minneapolis. I just think people are maybe missing the point. What do you think of uh council member Paul Masano's idea that like uh, we shouldn't have done this, uh, you shouldn't take credit for it. And also you forced the legislature to waste time on it. Do you have a response?
I mean, I think we did our job. I think we responded to a major constituent need. Cause there are many constituents who are drivers and riders that reached out to us and said, this is an egregious thing that's happening in our community. I mean, and we, we knew that this was gonna be a problem ten years ago. And I think we were integral in, in making sure that this got done. Um, we showed up and fought for our work at the Capitol. We built relationships. We had those conversations. And I'll just go back. I think we, we did what we were supposed to do to get a great outcome and someone, and, and the largest city in the state of Minnesota should absolutely have a large voice in this conversation, especially when we're talking about rides from the airport to downtown. Eleven million rides in Hennepin County alone.
One theme I'm uh taking from this year on, on the city council at City Hall is uh, so last term the city council didn't really want to do stuff. And there are some council members this term, like, we should not be doing all this stuff. This is uh, this is bringing more work for me. More people are calling my office to complain. Why, why are these, why is this DSA aligned city council doing so much stuff? It's so inconvenient for me. Uh, of course, we, it started this year with the uh, the Gaza resolution that people are like, this, this is not the city council's job. You shouldn't be doing this. Uh, the Uber Lyft stuff, you shouldn't be doing this. Leave it to the state. And uh, pe- people say like, oh, we're all Democrats here in Minneapolis. Uh, but like there, there is a conservative progressive split within Democrats even. There are people who don't want to do stuff who are just kind of content. Let's not do anything. This is, it's gonna upset the wrong people. Let's not do it. And people want, want to see some changes and have the ci- city council take some action. Uh, I've gone all this distance and I don't have a question, but but here, here's the que- here's the question, like, you've been around, you've been around a while, not just as a council member, but like, have you seen what has changed with Elliot Payne and hi- his new DSA aligned uh majority? And I, I know he's not in the DSA. Nobody tweet me that he's not in the DSA. I'm just echoing what the mayor's PAC says about uh, the city council.
I'll just say, like, we all learn, earned our election certificates. I certainly earned mine. I worked really hard. I reflect a lot on the things that people said that they wanted us to get done while we're in City Hall. Stand up for the people of our city that are being oppressed. Support our community in times of need. Workers protections, work for us, build trust within local government. And I think currently, we're, we're, we're taking a lot of time. Obviously, there's the things that get a lot of coverage that matter. But in our last council cycle alone, I think we passed like fifty four things through committee action. And we're taking on things like addressing homelessness. Um, I'm carrying three ordinances related to that. We're taking on the Labor Standards Board. So there's a place for workers, employers, experts in our community, unions to come together to offer sector-based policies to change things for people in our city. And when it, let's go back to the Gaza resolution really quick. That was so important. Was it something that I expected to take on in my first? In my first, first, like official act as a city council member after being sworn in in an organizational meeting? No, but none of us could have predicted the place that we're in today. And what happened was council members were reflecting the voices of their constituents. I received hundreds and hundreds of emails and we tracked the number of people that were in support of doing this and the number of people who weren't in support of this. And the overwhelming majority of people that reached out in my ward were supportive because it was a moment in time where community members saw that the, the innocent lives of Palestinian people, civilians, the way that the United States is complicit in this war. Their voices weren't being heard at the federal level. They weren't being heard at the state level. And so they had to turn to their city councils to say, hey, we're in a moment again, similar to the Vietnam War, where we want to speak out and use our voice because we're directly implicated. And community members both people who are Jewish, people who are Muslim, people who are Palestinian, reaching out and saying, we need you to take this action. And we joined so many other municipalities in doing it. And I think that was really important. And we're still in this egregious, egregious war. I, I kind of like have a hard time calling it a war because of how one sided the atrocity is. So that was a reflection of what our constituents needed. We took it on and I'm really proud of council president Payne, um, and other colleagues on this council that were like, we're going to take this on. And we're going to learn how to do our jobs in this new term. We're also going to take on policy work in each committee and introduce all of these ordinances that reflect local needs in our first, in our first council cycle. And that's what's been happening. People have just been working really, really hard to represent the voices of people on the ground in our city.
On Gaza, I am so disappointed in like older, uh, Democrats. Because I'm old enough to remember nine 11 and the Iraq war and protests and the fact that like Barack Obama's claim to fame. When he ran to president, for president was that he protested the Iraq war as a state senator, I think. Like foreign policy was not his job. But like he saw a problem with, with the foreign policy of this country and he spoke out about it. And like he was, he ended up being greatly admired for it. And like, as I said earlier, like this is a city of mostly Democrats. Many of whom are old enough to remember that period and are just willfully ignoring like history and, uh, it just feels obvious where you need to be right now to be on the right side of history. It's only gotten worse since it was a controversy for you to have taken up the, the resolution earlier this year. Uh, it's only gotten more clear what the right side is to be on. I'm disappointed in you Minneapolis Democrats, older ones. You should know better.
I, I'll just say like, shifting the status quo is ne- never easy and met with so much opposition all of the time. And that's why I think we hear this rhetoric of like, don't do this. It's not your job. Don't do this. It's inconvenient because we're trying to change the way that the system operates. As a reflection of everyday people in the city of Minneapolis. As a reflection of the people whose voices don't show up in like the town hall meetings that we host. Like that is just a reality that we're in. And the thing that I've been thinking about, especially as it's been relating to Gaza, the attacks we saw on Rafa that were so inhumane and horrific. And the continual aid, military aid to Israel is like, if you have a platform in this moment, you have to use it. You have to use your voice. And as a new council member at a local level, I think a lot about that and what, who I want to be in this moment and who I don't want to be in this moment. And while it's, while it might add a face value, not seem like a local issue. It seems like a national global issue. You have to be a geopolitical expert. It 100% is a local issue. We had a Muslim man in our city just the other day get hit by a car because he's Muslim. We have Jewish community members who are still, still just as scared of, as they've been even before October seven, that are struggling. We have Palestinian people in our community that are asking day in, day out, any platform they can get to, to ask for justice, to ask for funding to get people back home. Like I have a constituent in my ward. Pushed every, every single lover, went to the congressional office to try to get his parents and family on evacuee list in December, when they were having major, major media blackouts and was not able to. Right? Like this is hitting us, hitting home, especially in the state of Minnesota, a place where we have so many people from so many different communities around the world that are largely like descendants of refugees or refugees themselves because of war and conflict, like the one that we're seeing and funding.
I, so I want to go back to the budget, uh, cause I forgot to ask something. So there's a little bit of a process difference this year. Like it feels like you're having more meetings, uh, earlier. Uh, is that accurate?
Yeah.
And so do you feel like that's working well? Is it going to be more collaborative? Or will there inevitably be a face off at the end of the year where people are like, there's blood on your hands for not giving MPD this half million dollars here or million dollars there. Do you feel like this is a better process and people are working together on the budget better between the, the administration and the council?
I think it's a better process in terms of being proactive. I think in prior budget processes, we don't have the conversations as a city, like council, public, administration, like it doesn't like really take, take place together in form until like after the mayor's address and after we're already in markup and like having those public hearings. Like I'm working on writing up my priorities right now. And so if you live in Ward 12 and there's something you want to see funded or reflected in the budget, please reach out to me. In May, right? And that's good. That's really helpful. And like, we're getting information through our budget committee at a good pace, I think. So it's not all at once. We're able to ask questions. And so when we do get into like the mayor's budget address and what he's proposing, I think we can be more thoughtful and understanding of like, this is the room we have to make cuts, to move money around, to have conversations with him and his administration and the budget team. So I think it is setting us up to be more collaborative. I do think like, like budget process is like a marathon and it's hard. And it's like a part of the sausage making that happens in every level of government. So there's probably going to be debate and arguments. And my goal is like, I hope that on our city council, we can disagree with each other and disagree with each other well. Instead of being disagreeable to each other. That's something that I've been trying to help push forward as a colleague and member of the body. Like I want every councilman, member, regardless of who they represent or what they believe, to be able to ask their questions, have the debate that they need to have and do their job and work with me, even if we don't see eye to eye.
So you were one of the first candidates I spoke to in 2021. And I was maybe a little, uh, taken by surprise. You were striking not a DSA note, not a hardline DSA radical note, but a, let's work together, let's find common ground kind of note. And do you feel like that is happening now to a greater extent than last term?
I mean, yeah, I do. I know it's been like publicly, like there's meetings that are messy and that happens. And I want that to change. Like, I think that's a part of like the working together that I'm after is just having good public meetings and good meetings with each other. But I think that's shown up here, right? Like we've got support for things that seem maybe a bit more controversial, like our TNC work. Beyond just like, uh, a simple majority. We work together on figuring out the tobacco, uh, ordinance changes. We've been working together in our committees and having good discussions. And I think there's definitely like a tendency to look at, look at our differences more than the stuff that we're working on together. I'm hoping that our budget cycle and what we end up doing in our budget could be a moment where we can find those compromises. Like last term, since I got to be a part of the budget cycle, like that was a really good example of people having conversations with each other and making compromises. And like coming to, coming to like an outcome that felt good for everyone. So I think it's headed in that direction.
You brought Emily Kosky over to Team DSA.
Emily, Emily Kosky is Team DFL.
I don't mean it. I don't mean it. It's just a joke. Nobody.
I know. That's why I'm laughing and smiling and nodding.
So this is my last question before I ask you for a recommendation, but like things that failed to pass at the legislature was that infrastructure spending bill. And so one of the things contained, and there was a whole bunch of Minneapolis stuff. There was North Commons Park and there was some funding for Avivo. And also the, the roof depot, East Phillips Urban Farm site, the city was going to get money to place their public works facility somewhere else. Like, do you know, you may not know this, but do you know the status of, like, how does that, uh, missing out on that funding affect? Uh, what people hope to happen at, uh, the East Phillips Urban Farm?
Yeah, I think that it was really, really unfortunate that, um, that cash bill wasn't able to go through. Kind of in retrospect, it's just like, how, how could we have gotten just like 30 more seconds back on the clock? Uh, but they have their legislative process and how they set things up. I know that they struggled a lot with the Republican filibusters that were happening pretty consistently day after day, that backlapped their work. I mean, I think we're in a moment with the East Phillips Urban Farm where we really have to come together and say that this is 100% one of the biggest priorities in the city of Minneapolis and in our region. It's deeply important to our, our communities, um, impacted by environmental injustice and just generations of injustice to the indigenous community and black and brown communities of East Phillips. And a lot of, a lot of people within, like, within Minnesota, outside of Minneapolis have looked at this and seen this as something that is good for the community as in, is like a step forward. So we're having conversations on what we need to do to make sure that that agreement goes through in July. And I feel really optimistic about it. Um, I wish that legislatively that that funding could have come through, but I believe that we can find the solution and it's going to just, gonna take us collaborating with, with the county, with the mayor's office, with the council and our community to get it done. But I feel optimistic that we're going to get it done and keep the dream alive for the East Phillips River Farm.
Is it going to blow a hole in the budget? If, is whatever resolution comes there, is that gonna require a big outlay of money from the city?
I think we, we're still having discussions around what are, what are opportunities for funding? I think I would, uh, note that if we're, if we're looking at funding, it's going to be outside of this budget process. So it wouldn't be reflected in the budget that we pass. Cause the agreement, um, is currently set for July.
Okay. Uh, so we're done.
I'll just say this, I'll just say this, like, if we need to, if we need to move funding, within like our contingency or other places for this, I think it's a, it's a key priority. So I would be supportive of that. Now we're done.
Not really, because you have to give me recommendations.
Okay. What do you want recommendations for?
Anything. What are you enjoying? It can't be pickleball because you already said pickleball. It can't be canoeing. You already mentioned canoeing. What's, uh, what other things?
What am I enjoying for you to enjoy as well?
For me or the entire audience, like a general audience here. Or a movie or a TV show? Have you seen the TV show Ripley? I can recommend that to listeners.
No, I haven't.
It's, you've heard of the talented Mr. Ripley, right?
I don't think so.
It was, uh, I think it was a Matt Damon movie like 20 plus years ago.
Okay.
And, uh, they made a TV show out of it. I enjoyed it. I enjoyed the Italian setting. It's about a, a con man who just is increasingly, uh, he takes on the identity of another man. A wealthy man, he befriends him and then falls in love with his lifestyles. Like, no, now I'm this guy. And, uh, I enjoyed the Italian setting and you really start to identify with Ripley through the series. And I enjoyed it as a series rather than a movie. I don't know if I even remember the movie, but also a series of books, also a series of books here.
Cool. I'll check it out. Okay. So, um, one of my hobbies for the last, I guess, couple of years, because it's like a after, like after evening, activity late in the evening. Um, is going to concerts and listening to music. And a band that I've been loving a lot, and I feel like they're coming back to Minnesota this fall. And I've seen them every time they've come to Minnesota the last year and a half, I think, is dead. It's spelled D E H D. They're a Chicago based Midwest emo band. They're really amazing. They just re- released another album. I would really recommend giving them a listen. I think they're really unique in the fact that like they're a three person band. The lead vocalist, she just has such an interesting voice. And yeah, like if you're into like, like indie music, Midwest emo specifically, like this is a band to check out and it's D E H D, dead.
Okay. Well, thank you for that recommendation. Uh, my guest has been Ward 12 council member, Oreen Chowdhury. Uh, this has been the Wedge Life Podcast. I'm your host, John Edwards. Thank you for listening.